It's five o'clock, so we'll call to order this special meeting of the City Council here on March 11th, 2020. Carl, would you give me a roll call, please?
Councilmember Renly.
Here.
Ronane.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Rife.
Here.
Johnson.
Bunsonus.
Present.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Shawman.
Here. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First and only order of business tonight will be to discuss the AGP violations of wastewater discharge permit and possible actions to the city and allow AGP opportunity to address those concerns. I think the way that we'll handle this thing will be to, well, first of all, I'd like to extend an appreciation for having made the trek up here today and representing the company. I know that it was a lot of miles to put under your belts to attend a meeting. So on Monday, it was brought to our attention kind of the dangerous levels of hydrogen sulfide, and that expressed some real urgency amongst the council itself, and it brought us to this point here today. We'll start by having the city administration kind of give us a rundown of where we're at and how we got here, including a timeline as well as maps and opportunity then for you guys to respond to that. And then we'll discuss the council, any kind of concerns that they may have, as well as a recommended plan of action. So I spoke to Councilman Rife before the meeting, and he had something to address before we get into the admin's point of view.
Yeah, after thinking about this topic for a little while, I, it's determined, at least I determined it with my human resource representatives, but I have a professional conflict here. So I'm going to abstain from the conversation as well as any potential votes. But I wanted to be here to listen and see how things go, so.
Sounds good. And with that, I will turn things over. Ron, are you going to take the reins here?
I can. Mayor, thank you. We're going to start with the administration just identifying the history of the permitting and compliance process, and then the hydrogen sulfide problem itself. And we've got to address that. We will have our Public Works Director, Robin Bobzine. We have Water Reclamation Facility Superintendent Peggy Betten here as well. So Peggy, maybe I'll have you come on up. Because I'm a lawyer, I like to think that I, that the words I say are gold. But I think what you'll hear, the best things that you'll hear will be coming out of our boots on the ground, which is our Public Works Director and our Water Reclamation Facility Superintendent. I have prepared, as we go through this process, a map and some graphs and clips that we can see, some video clips that we can watch. But the purpose of this initial presentation is just to kind of establish where we're at, and then talk about what the administration has available to it for remedies, and then at that point, turn it over for AGP to respond or present anything that it chooses to do so at that time. So first, I wonder, Peggy, if you could start us off by just walking through, as quickly as you can, the wastewater discharge permitting process, and for the public, so that they understand why it, why is it that they, that an industry has to go through that process?
Well, the reason that an industry has to go through the process is because we know that these large industries can be impactful to the wastewater treatment collection and treatment system and the collection system. So what we do long before the industry, you know, starts even construction, is we give them a wastewater discharge permit application for them to fill out. And in that permitting process, or in the application process, they tell us what their flows are going to be, what their water consumption will be, what the strength of their discharge will be, the frequency of, you know, how often they're going to discharge, if it's a 24/7, or if it's a batch discharge, on and on and on. It's a lengthy document. And so when we go through and we actually write the permit, once that, once that application is submitted, then we go through and we talk back and forth with the industry and the rest of the administration about this industry, what kind of impact they're going to have. And these are the discharge parameters that you're going to have to meet, the pollutant limitations. Our plant can only treat certain pollutants: oxygen-demanding pollutants, suspended solids, ammonia. That's it. Those are the three big ones. Okay? So anything outside of that, we generally have people put in treatment systems. If you have heavy metals, things like that. BOD or oxygen-demanding pollutants, suspended solids, and ammonia are a little different, because we have the ability to remove those pollutants. So we know how much we can accept from certain industries without overwhelming the plant, because we want to leave some for expansion. So we look at the documents that the industry has given us, and they say, okay, our BOD will be this much. And then we determine, are you going to need to have further treatment, or can we handle this concentration? And in this case, we determine that we can handle the concentration. And the permit is issued.
And in AGP's case, the permit was issued back in, it looks like in 2018?
Right.
And they didn't start actually operating until, they started discharging to the, to the city in July of 2019?
Correct.
And in that, you established in that, in the permit that you gave them, you established the amount of BOD that they could send you?
Right.
At like 250?
275 milligrams per liter. And that's what they said their peak BOD would be in their permitting application.
And in that process, did you anticipate that you may have issues with their BOD?
Somewhat, but not so much, you know, the BOD. We trusted them on that. Our concern was more the temperature of their wastewater.
And the temperature then would lead to potential hydrogen sulfide or hydrogen sulfide gas production?
Right. That's, that's one of the things we were worried about. So we incorporated into the permit that at this point, we're not going to give you a temperature limit. But should things surface that we have issues with, we will go back in and you will have to put in a chiller. And at that point, they are given the opportunity to either reduce their temperature before they start discharging, or, you know, face the consequences after they've started discharging.
Peggy, then, they began discharging to the city, into the city sanitary sewer in July of 2019.
Correct.
Were you aware, or did, did the city become aware of some complaints downstream in their sanitary sewer discharge route of some odors, bad odors?
I'm going to let Robin talk about that.
We did, we did start hearing some complaints. I got a few phone calls initially. It got to the point where we decided we needed to do something to vent the system, because it seemed like it was, it wasn't a constant complaint, but it was a lot of mornings, seemed like when it was heavy air or very little wind, it seemed like the complaints were more prevalent, primarily from Midstates Printing. They are the first, now, that's not true. They are the third building, fourth building downstream from the discharge point from AGP. They have many, many sewer vents coming out of their building, and on those heavier days, it seemed like the, they were, the sewer was venting through their building and outside of their building, and then it was getting pulled back in through their air exchange.
Robin, if I direct you to the screen, you can see the map that's on there?
Yes.
Can you see the little hand? That's my cursor?
Yep.
Up in the upper right-hand corner, there's a pin for AGP. Is that where the AGP plant is located?
It is, yes.
And that's northwest of town. And then there's a text box that says AGP discharge entrance point into our collection system. Does that show where that starts?
Their forestman comes into our first manhole in the industrial park on that road.
And on the map, just to the right, there is a, is a, is that a church, a small?
The one on the right is the old APA Optics Building. The next one down is what was Verifications, now is, is a church. And then the next one down is our Development Corporation Building. And then the one at the bottom of the screen right there that you're pointing to is Midstates Printing.
So HEB discharges at this point, and they discharge average of 200,000 gallons per day, roughly?
That, or maybe a little more, yes.
And then down, Midstates, down on that line is about 2,300 gallons per day?
That's correct. That's their average, yes.
So you began to receive complaints and, from Midstates?
From Midstates, yes.
All right. Do you know, was AGP informed of those complaints at that time?
We, you know, not initially, no. You know, I, I thought it was something we could handle by venting, and I wasn't sure what the remedy would be, but we were going to try to do what we could to vent the system on our own.
So if I push it back over to you, Peggy, self-monitoring reports were starting to come in from AGP after they began operations, or began discharging to us in July, correct?
Correct.
And are those, how far behind are usually on those reports?
It's usually, the monthly report is due 28 days following the end of the reporting period. So 28 days after the end of the month.
And so you would get those, the, towards the end of the following month?
Right.
And were you starting to see at the, at, from those reports, some high BOD levels?
Right. They, from the very first monitoring that they had done, they had not, they were not in compliance with their, with the BOD.
And were you visiting with AGP about that?
Yep.
All right. So the months go by, we're now into January of this year. Was there an inspection by the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources of the city facility?
Right. They inspected, they do what's called a surface water discharge permit, because we have a permit, just like the industries do. And they come every couple of years and inspect our facilities. And that, and our permit, our discharge permit not only includes the treatment plant itself, but it also includes collection system to protect all of the publicly owned treatment works, and which includes treatment and collection.
Did that inspection report identify an issue with the hydrogen sulfide?
It did. The gentleman that was our inspector had a vast amount of experience with the city of Brookings, South Dakota, and the issue that they had when their big industry, Bell Brands, started up. So he was very keen on hydrogen sulfide, what it can do to the infrastructure, what high concentrations can do. And he was rightfully concerned and requested that we formulate a plan to take a look at these manholes and start finding out what the actual levels are in the manholes.
So for the public edification, can you explain why hydrogen sulfide gas production is a problem?
It's a lethal gas. I mean, there's, that's the explanation that you need. At very low levels, and I believe there was some documentation that was provided with the, to the council earlier, that, you know, the human nose is, is pretty remarkable. We can pick up two parts per million of hydrogen sulfide gas. So, and then as you start incrementally increasing it, it has more of a further effect on you. Higher levels can cause chronic issues with watery eyes, headaches, stuff like that. And then certain levels can be lethal, instantly lethal.
And how about it's what it does to this, to this infrastructure?
I'm going to pass that over to Robin again.
You know, from the infrastructure standpoint, a hydrogen sulfide gas is basically like, it will turn to a mild acid, which is very difficult to deal with on concrete. It will etch the concrete, it will soften the concrete, and exposed long enough will cause problems with manholes, or any kind of concrete that it will come in contact with, metals, things of that nature.
So you were instructed by the state DNR to work with AGP to resolve the hydrogen sulfide gas production problem, right?
Correct. Right.
How do we know that it was AGP that that problem was coming from?
We haven't had any experience with odors before. There's been very little flow out in those initial first two or three manholes over the last year or so. Robin could probably speak to, better to that.
You know, APA Optics was never a high-volume user. Verifications probably at its peak was well below Midstates. Just the sheer volume that AGP is producing on a wastewater volume is, overtakes everything else that's out there. Everything else is very minor.
So I'll inform the council that around this same time as we received the report from, the inspection report from the DNR, we were in the process of drafting the compliance order.
Right.
Administrative compliance order regarding the BOD violations at that time. And that, can you explain to the council what the requirements for AGP were in that administrative compliance order that was served in February, on February 18th is when they received that?
Right. The administrative compliance order stated that they need to come up with an immediate plan to address the following issues. And it was the hydrogen sulfide they needed to get back with us within 30 days as to what they're going to do, and within 60 days, submit construction plans as to what they're going to do to construct a system that will remove the additional BOD. The problem with hydrogen sulfide is it has further exacerbated the production of it by a food source, which is the high BOD and the temperature. So the other thing that we require of them now is to reduce the temperature of their discharge. So they had those three things that they need to incorporate. And they need to have a system up and running by the 31st of December.
And that's a pre-treatment system?
That is a pre-treatment system, right.
So following that, then, did you also order some monitors to assist you?
I did. As part of our response to the state as to what we were going to do, we had to respond to the state, just like AGP responds to us. So we responded to the state that we will address several issues, and one of which was to get data loggers for hydrogen sulfide, or monitors, that we could put into the manholes in order to track over an extended period of time what those levels were.
And so you ordered those, are those called Accrologers?
Accrologers, yep.
And, and those were placed by you in manholes in this area?
Yes.
On the 24th?
Right. We placed them in manhole number two, and, right there. And then downstream of that, about 2,000 feet over between Midstates and Speedy Delivery is also located out there, there's a manhole there.
So the Accrologger, this text box shows that you placed the first one 350 feet downstream of the entrance point?
Correct.
And then the second one was placed 1,950 feet downstream?
Right.
Okay. And what did, what did the data results confirm, confirm for you from those?
The data results confirmed that we had very high levels, dangerously high levels of hydrogen sulfide gas in those manholes. So, and it was last Wednesday when we pulled those data loggers, the 4th of March. Is that Tuesday or Wednesday when we pulled them? And what you're looking at here is a lot of blue squiggles, but that is the data that came off of the one Accrologger that was on the second manhole on Production Street. And if you look at the scale, you can see, there, there you go. Okay, so our average is about in that, in those manholes, 135, almost 136 parts per million of hydrogen sulfide gas. The maximum being 678. So it's cyclical, it goes up and down.
This is the data from the logger that was 350 feet down?
Correct.
And it identified these high, high ranges then?
Exactly.
And then if we go to the next page?
And those loggers are at the top of the manhole?
They are at the top of the manhole. And the thing about hydrogen sulfide gas is that it's heavier than air. So the further down the manhole you go, the more concentrated those levels get. So these are hanging within 12 inches of the, you know, they're hanging through the loop, the pickholes on the manholes. So this one is the one that's between Midstates and Speedy Delivery. And that one, the average was 267 parts per million with a maximum level of 1,131 parts per million.
So this data information, when you received that, did you then share that with AGP?
I did, yes.
And they, they needed a little time to just process that information as well?
Right.
So you talked about the, you know, the, the problem with the sulfide gas as far as it being lethal to humans at certain levels. And then also, Robin mentioned the problem with the, with the corrosive elements of, of the sulfide and the sulfide gas within the system, that it can, that it can damage both cement and steel structures. Is that correct? We wanted to show the council some video that was taken yesterday. The first video is what we call our benchmark video. And I'm going to, before we run that, let me, let me take you back to the, to the graph. The benchmark video is this Western Printing Manhole 1, but you'll see that it's located to the west of where the entrance point is for AGP, and it's actually on a separate line, correct?
It's, it's within the same system, installed at the same time, but it is not affected by the flows from AGP, correct?
So what we'll see here is a video, and if I can turn this on.
Probably just a quarter mile away, half mile?
Uh, yeah, probably just under a quarter mile away from, from the other parallel line.
So what is this, Robin? Can you explain to this, to us, please?
This, this, what you're looking at is, the top of the video, or the top of that is the casting for the manhole cover. Below that, you'll see a series of rings. Those are adjustment rings to bring that casting to an elevation for street level, basically. And then everything below that is going to be part of the manhole itself.
And can you comment on just what you see as far as the condition of the, of the top metal ring and the, and the concrete?
Very, very normal, very normal aging process for the concrete and for the casting. This is roughly 25 years old at this point.
For the uninitiated, does this appear, do you see anything in, in this picture that appears to be sulfide, a coating of sulfide, or?
Nothing, no.
So I'll run that.
And we have tested that manhole several times with our handheld, and there's been no sulfide, hydrogen sulfide gas in it.
Okay. So I'm going to press play, and you can explain what, what we just saw after, after we're done.
What they're doing is they're just, they're just taking a pic, and they're pounding in the portion of the manhole just to show whether it's sound concrete or not.
And is it sound concrete?
It is sound concrete.
And so there is normal rust, but the, but the condition is, is what you would expect for its age?
Correct.
So now I'm going to go to the second manhole, and we'll do a quick photo of that. And I want to show the, show where that is. So first manhole that we just looked at a video of is right here, correct, by Western Printing?
Right.
The second video and photo that we're seeing is from a manhole that's just south of the railroad track on Jones Street.
Correct.
And is this roughly then the same age then?
It is, it is the same age, yes, within a month.
So we'll go to the picture again. And can you tell us what this picture is showing?
And what you're looking at is the casting for this particular manhole. And you can see some serious, serious rusting on it. Something, something is happening to this different than what is happening in the other manhole.
And, excuse me. Here's a short clip of, excuse me. So this is the same manhole we just looked at where the top was all rust, was all chipped?
Correct, yes.
Flaking away?
Yes.
And is the coloration, can you comment on that?
This one has a, appears to be a white residue on the concrete. You know, different than the gray concrete you're seeing. This is like a white residue.
Okay. And by the way, was Jeremy Thorsonson's that's wielding the, the sledge?
Jeremy, I think, was holding the camera, and Robin Hornsith, our foreman, was actually doing the pounding.
So can you just, what are we seeing there?
And you're seeing some kind of residue scraping off the face of it. We did not show in, in this particular video, but we did pound on it as well, and there were soft spots in it.
So is this consistent with what you would expect with some damage from sulfide?
Yes.
All right. And again, to acclimate everybody, that video we just saw is at this point south and, but still within the discharge route of the AGP discharge?
Right. And we're seeing similar, similar things downstream to the lift station down where the red thumbtack is at the bottom of the screen there, too.
So I, I should ask, Robin, as we go down this yellow line, what is this yellow line here that we're seeing?
That yellow line is the discharge point. So if you go down to the bottom, down by 6th Avenue, where the thumbtack is right there, that's where our lift station is that will, all the flow from this is going to that. Then we pump it over to the next one that is by the mall, where it turns and goes back through the mall. Part right there is where our next system is, our next lift station is.
And it goes through the mall here?
Through the mall, over to 3rd Avenue, comes back, and goes down to the next lift station on Roosevelt Street.
And so we, we have identified with the Accrologers, the, the types of levels we're seeing up here. We're seeing damage to the manhole structure itself?
Correct.
At this point. Is there some lessening or decrease of the sulfide gas that you can note as you get further away from?
I think it's just as strong down there.
It's actually, yeah. The, we actually, when you get down to the new industrial park, there's a manhole just outside of that lift station that we've tested. And every time we've tested it, it's over 200 parts per million. And then we also get the explosive levels, because hydrogen sulfide gas is also explosive.
So currently, this is, this is a dangerous situation, both for, for persons and for property? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So what, in light of this information that we've shared with the council, can you explain to them what are, what you're doing to try to address this issue and reduce the, the amount of gas?
We have met with AGP. We sent them the findings last week. We've already met with them once this week. We are working with Banner and Associates, who is our design engineer for the wastewater plant, and have been working with Dennis Rebeline from there to help formulate a chemical feed system that will first off, stop the reaction from happening, and second, keep it from happening again. Because the problem with sulfide is unless it gets neutralized, it's just going to keep going and going. And you could see that in those graphs, where we would have a spike, then it would go down, and then it would spike again. So we're working on a, a system that we can put in as expeditiously as possible with AGP to neutralize this as short-term, and then they are working on the long-term.
And are you satisfied that AGP has been assisting and is, and is motivated towards finding a solution?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Peggy and Robin. I will inform the council that, that the compliance process is in fact a process. And I have provided each of the council members with a copy of the Section 54-20, 211, that talks about administrative enforcement remedies. And just to inform the council, when we did the administrative compliance order this past February, this was part of this process that we're going through. And there are avail, there is available to administration as part of its compliance arsenal, the following types of, of enforcement remedies. You can, you can do the consent orders, where you enter into an agreement with the industry that would establish potentially a schedule for their compliance, would stipulate fines. There's a compliance meeting order that you can order when you have a industry that is not responsive, not listening to you. That is not the case with AGP. We did the administrative compliance order, and that administrative compliance order does two things. It can tell the industry that it needs to follow a certain course of action, might include beefing up its reporting requirements, might change some of its pollutant limitations, and it can also include administrative penalties. And there's a method for calculating, for going through that process as well. When you start getting a little more, when you see the problem being either not addressed by the industry, or creating in fact a clear and present danger to the public health and safety, then you can start going with more heavy-handed options, including a cease and desist order, a emergency suspension, and you need to establish imminent danger. And then finally, if you have a completely recalcitrant industry, you can terminate their permit. And so I'm, I'm letting the council know that these are avail, these are remedies available to the administration as, as the, as it moves forward with working with an industry. We are, it is not administration's recommendation that we go to an emergency suspension for any kind of a cease and desist order. We would like Uh, we would like to continue to work with AGP, um, on efforts to reduce this. Uh, as, one, one thing that the council can, can note from the map here is that all of this is happening in areas that are, that are less densely populated, which is, which is helpful. Um, there is the ability of the system to, to help dissipate. We are also at a time where I think it's, um, with the additional water that's coming into the system for spring thaw, that's assisting, isn't it?
Yes, it's lowering the temperature and it's diluting, so.
So those are positive things that can, can give us time to work with AGP and give AGP time to look at its processes and its pretreatment to help reduce that level and get that eventually down to where, once the pretreatment system is in place, um, this will not be a problem in the future. So just wanted to, uh, make sure that the council is aware, and of course, um, as we get, uh, to the later stages of this meeting, you're welcome to ask further questions of, of what, what things can be done or are being done. But for now, we, we wanted to wrap up the administrative portion of this, uh, meeting by saying that we're not recommending a suspension, we're not recommending a cease and desist. Uh, we are, um, happy to continue to work with AGP, especially with a, with a partner that is wanting to and motivated to try to help us find a solution as well.
Thank you, Ron. That was very informative, and Peggy, thank you for, yeah, if you would like to find your original spot. I'd like to invite forward any representative from AGP that would like to, uh, to make any comments on the matter, if, if any of you gentlemen would, um, be interested. So once again, we appreciate you guys making the time to make it up here and, uh, and your attention and cooperation in this matter. Um, you know, obviously, there's always gonna be bugs to work out of any new system, so the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. Um, just a way of introduction, uh, my name is Kelly Jorgensen. I'm the Director of Environmental Compliance for AGP and responsible for compliance with all environmental regulations for all of AGP's facilities. Uh, have seated here with me Ernie Kiley, who is the Senior Vice President of Operations. Uh, we also have here with us this evening the Senior Director of Operations, uh, the Director of Operations, and then our local plant manager as well. Just to provide you a little bit of additional information so that you understand, uh, how we, how we got here and what we've been doing. Peggy described the, the permitting process, uh, that we went through to get a wastewater discharge permit so that we could discharge to the system. In preparing that application and providing the data that we did as far as anticipated flows, anticipated, uh, BOD, total suspended solids, ammonia, we reviewed, um, the discharge that we have from wastewater at other similar AGP facilities. And based on the design of this facility and what we'd seen at other facilities, um, that's where we came up with those numbers. And one of particular concern is the two hundred and seventy-five milligrams per liter of, uh, of BOD. And we fully expected that that would be our maximum that we would see based on that. And so, um, the higher BODs that we're seeing has caught AGP as much by surprise as it has the, the city. And so we've been working to try and, and find, um, the source of that and the solution to that. Uh, our discharge from our facility consists of, of a number of different flows. Uh, we have the incoming water that comes to, to our plant that we use for, for steam primarily, and that goes through a reverse osmosis system, and as opposed to a water softener. And so we go through there, and so, um, we condition the water, um, so that we use it for steam. And the RO reject from that process, or the retentate from a reverse osmosis system, comes to the, to the city. And we've got two of them, and they cycle on and off just depending on, on demand. We also have a, a cooling tower there that we use for, for cooling, um, water and processes there. And so you, you reach a certain conductivity level there, or buildup of total dissolved solids there. And so we discharge on a nearly continuous basis from that. It flows up and down as the conductivity, um, varies throughout the process. And then we also have a, a small amount of boiler blowdown, of water that's associated with, with the boiler. Those three sources, um, are designed not to have any BOD, or oil and grease or ammonia, and, and they don't. We, we've tested those and, and found that we don't have anything happening strange in those processes. We don't have contamination in those processes that's adding to the BOD loading. The rest of the wastewater that we have, uh, it comes from our process. We process soybeans. Um, they're cracked and deholed where we remove the, the seed basically from the hole. Those cracks are, are conditioned and rolled through rollers and flakes, and then they go through a hexane extraction system where we extract the soybean oil from them. And then those flakes are, are further go through a process, and then we also recover the hexane that we need, we have as well. So we go through a desolventizing process. Uh, we use live steam to heat and drive off the hexane from, from the flakes so that we can recover the hexane so it's not emitted to the atmosphere. And in that process of, of live sparge steam and condensing that so that we can separate the hexane from the water, um, you pull, um, certain portions of, of the beans out of the bean and, and into solution. And sometimes you also end up with suspended solids, which are very small particles of the soybeans as well. And so that's what we have that represents a BOD demand. Also because we're extracting the oil from that, sometimes we get a little bit of carryover of oil, soybean oil into the wastewater system as well, and so we, we control that as well. We have a skim pit where we remove any residual oil there. And, um, so that's what makes up our, our wastewater. As we've gone through, uh, our process trying to, to find out, you've got three primary areas that are going to dictate what it is you're going to see from a, from a BOD or an organic loading coming in your, in your wastewater stream. Number one's gonna be your, your equipment and how it, uh, is designed and operates. Um, so we took a shutdown shortly after operating and seeing the high BODs and had the equipment manufacturers come in to take a look at that. Um, we made some changes that they suggested, um, resulted in, in no change to the BOD. We've got a, another annual shutdown coming up in, in May of this year. We'll go in and reevaluate the equipment as well. So, so that's number one is, is your equipment. Number two is, uh, the operation of the equipment and how the facility is, is operated. And are you making mistakes in the way it's operating and allowing things to, to carry over? Um, are your operational conditions and parameters, um, out of line? And so we've gone through that process as well, or our plant managers, an experienced plant manager having operated to one of our other facilities before in, in Dawson area. Uh, we've also compared operating parameters that we have at other AGP facilities from which we took the wastewater loading numbers. Uh, just to try and find out anything there. That's not made much of a difference at all either. The third place is simply what you have to work with as a, as a raw product, uh, the soybeans and, and what they can contain. And, um, this is our first plant where we're receiving beans from, from South Dakota. Uh, we don't know exactly what it is there, but as we've taken a look at our BOD, it's typically made up of three components. You've got total suspended solids, uh, which is just fine particles in the wastewater stream. You have some oil and grease carryover that has a, a BOD demand. And then you sometimes have, uh, an ammonia component as well because of the protein that's in the beans. If you, if you break that down enough, you can, you can show higher ammonia. The ammonia levels, the TSS levels, and the oil and grease levels that we're seeing are comparable or less than with other AGP facilities. And so what we have here is a dissolved BOD, um, and, and we quite frankly don't know what that's, that's made up of. Uh, and so like I say, that's what we've been working to, to try and find out, and, and will continue to, to work to do that. As far as the hydrogen sulfide generation, um, it is, uh, you've got the, the high BOD that is associated with it. And then the other thing that you have to have is you've got sulfates that come from the source water. Some of that also comes from the sulfur that's in, in the beans themselves. We use very small amounts of, um, sulfuric acid for control of the pH in our cooling tower, so there's a little bit in that. But once again, very small amounts. Um, we've started a sampling of the, both the sulfate and the sulfite levels at nine or ten different plants, or, excuse me, points throughout our process to determine what those levels are, to see if we can control those, um, and see if there's anything that we can do to remove that sulfur or sulfate compounds from that, which would then give you less sulfur or sulfate in your wastewater that could then be converted to hydrogen sulfide. Uh, and so we're, we're looking at options for reducing those amounts as well. With the various streams that we have coming into our plant, our, our wastewater discharge from our skim pit from the process is a fairly constant discharge. Our cooling tower blowdown is constant but variable. Our RO reject cycles on and off, uh, with the two membranes that we have on that. And then our boiler blow, blowdown is more or less, uh, constant as well. But each one of those streams has its own profile as far as temperature, as far as, um, flow. And so we're looking at things that we can do to, um, both equalize our flow, which will also homogenize or make more constant the profile of the discharge that's, that's going. Right now, um, on our temperature logger that we have of our wastewater, um, we see temperature variation anywhere from about fifty degrees up to, uh, to a hundred to a hundred and ten degrees. We'll get an occasional peak up there. And that's due primarily just because you have some of those, our wastewater flow from our process is, is a hotter temperature. Your boiler blowdown's gonna be hotter where your RO reject, which is just your source water, is gonna be your lower groundwater temperature, cooling tower blowdown, they've all got different temperature profiles. And so depending on how many of those are actually flowing at a given point in time, your, your temperature's gonna vary. So we're looking at things that we can do to, to vary that. Our plant manager took a look just at about the first week and a half in, in March and just ran a, a numerical average on our wastewater temperature, and it's about seventy-six degrees. That's not a, a flow-weighted average, um, so we're not sure exactly what that flow-weighted average is, but it, it takes readings, uh, about once every five minutes, I believe. And so that's just a, a time-weighted average on, on average temperature. So we think when you take a look at, at really what's going into the system, um, it's, it's not as though it's being discharged at a, at a, at ninety to a hundred degrees on, on a constant basis. And I think somewhat because of those changes in temperature uh, may also be why you're seeing some of those fluctuations in hydrogen sulfide that, uh, that Peggy showed on the AccuLog, so. Uh, so we think as, as we get those leveled out or homogenized out, that that will help in, in the process as well. Peggy shared with us the information on, on the hydrogen sulfide, um, last Friday, um, and so, and requested a meeting on Monday, so we got, uh, the consultants that we've been working with on our compliance order to, to address the issues. We got them up here. I came up myself as, as well, and we've been working with them. Peggy has been kind enough to share the contact information with, with Dennis from, um, from the consultants that the city's using as well, so that those two consultants are, are in contact. Uh, after our meeting on Monday that we had with, with Peggy and, and her consultant was on the line, as well as our consultants there, um, we did have, uh, one idea that we came up with that wasn't discussed in that meeting and conference call that we, um, made a phone call and suggested to Peggy, and that was, uh, power washing or flushing the, the lines. Um, the consultant that we've worked with has seen some success in that for an immediately lowering. Because what you have to have for hydrogen sulfide to generate, you not only have to have the right conditions, but you have to have the biomass or the biofilm or the bugs, the microbes that actually take and convert the sulfites into hydrogen sulfide gas. And so that we thought that by removing as much as we could, both those that were perhaps in, in sludge or sediment or, or biomass on the bottom of the pipes, as well as those that you get in the vapor phase that it actually adhere to the pipe, that we might be able to see some reduction in that. Uh, I know Peggy and Amanda went out Tuesday to, to check that. They were still getting some readings, um, above two hundred on that, uh, with the meter they have, because that's as high as theirs goes, but with above two hundred, you don't know if that's two hundred and fifty or if it's a thousand and fifty. Uh, so you don't know if you're seeing a, any improvement at all. Down on Capitol Avenue there, um, where there's a second ventilator on one of the manholes there, uh, Lance, our plant manager, went down there and checked that this morning because we also have a, a meter that we use for confined space entry for gases as, as well in our facility. And there was a reading there that was only forty. And, uh, and that, that, that's usually been one of the, the worst areas as it's tended to accumulate downstream. So we think that that, um, even though there's very limited data, has at least, um, helped some. And, and we're, we were very grateful when, when we called Peggy. We were, we were prepared to, to offer to the city, hey, we'll, we'll hire somebody and we'll have them come in and, and power wash those lines. And, and Peggy very graciously said, no, I, I think that's a good idea. We'll go ahead and, and do it, um, with confidence in her people that they would take the appropriate, uh, safety precautions for dealing with the high levels there and doing that. And so we very much appreciate that. One thing is, as we, as we move forward, um, that we would like to see is AGP, because we're committed to working with the city to find a solutions, is to try and find ways to improve the communications. For example, the, the odors complaints that were received by the city. Um, we saw in the compliance order that there were over forty of them. AGP had no knowledge of those at, at the corporate level at all. Um, we knew that there was some odor there, but we had no idea that there was odor complaints. And, and AGP's committed to being a good community citizen. And so anything that the city hears that might adversely reflect on AGP, we'd really love to know about that so that we can quickly address that. Same thing, you know, with, with the state inspection coming in and, and the state, um, immediately raising concerns about hydrogen sulfide. We'd have loved to have partnered with the city in investigating that and, and taking action, uh, perhaps quicker than what we've been able to. Um, the AccuLoggers going in, um, you know, we received the data on that after, after they were polled on last Friday, and so we've tried to be responsive to that. But anything that we can do to increase the, the transparency and the communication both ways, both from AGP to the city and from the city to AGP, we would like to continue to work on that so that we know of concerns on a more real-time basis, so that we can, on a more real-time basis, uh, work to address those. As it sits right now, as far as what we're doing on the, on the hydrogen sulfide, um, our consultant has, has been talking, uh, both yesterday and, uh, and today with, with Dennis and with Hawkins Chemical. I know they had identified, uh, a possible solution of some sodium nitrate to use, which, uh, you introduce into the system and it essentially feeds the microbes something different so that they're not eating the sulfites and converting them into hydrogen sulfide gas. And that's, that's one option. We've been looking at that. One of the concerns that we have about that and that our consultant has spoke with Dennis about, and, and they share that concern, is you can see from the maps that have been shown up there that the area that's being primarily impacted with the higher areas are up in that, uh, commercial area, um, in low density as far as people and residential areas. Some things that you do to try and address hydrogen sulfide, if you don't fully address them and it, it can actually move them downstream, so that the hydrogen sulfide doesn't generate within that first section, but it may generate further down. And the last thing that we want to do is to just move the problem further downstream, especially where it's in a, in a more populated and residential, where there, where there's more people in there. So we're looking to try and keep it- So we're looking to try and keep it treated and addressed in that upper section before that first man lift, and make sure that we don't just push a problem downstream and reduce the hydrogen sulfide being generated immediately where we discharge. So our consultant currently is recommending an oxidizer right now, where you actually provide oxygen, most likely in the form of hydrogen peroxide. That would help to provide the oxygen and keep the system from going anaerobic or septic to prevent the formation of the hydrogen sulfide generation. And then there's also hydrogen sulfide scavengers, to where you can actually take and have that reaction and bind those up. They've had success with that in the past, and those two avenues as well have shown success, and they take care of the problem more immediately and also keep it from reoccurring downstream. The other concern that we've had, and Hawkins Chemical readily admitted this today as well, is that the dosage rate associated with the sodium nitrate, it's, you're kind of shooting from your hip, and you don't know exactly how much it's going to take to address the problem. And so you kind of keep adding, backing off, or whatever. And so there's not as high a competence level that that's going to address it. The hydrogen peroxide is available in the next two to three days. The chemical itself is readily available, but with shipping and getting it set up, we think it'll be in that timeframe before we're actually able to do something. And so that's the direction we're headed right now. And so we're hopeful that here, by the end of the week, we'll actually have some type of chemical addition in place to help address that. One thing that we've identified, as well as a concern as we do this, and I'm sure that we'll be able to work with Penny and with Robin to address this, is as we address this, obviously everybody's going to be concerned, what kind of progress are we making? And I know Peggy has plans of putting, once we get some chemical addition, of putting the Acculoggers back in there as well. As she mentions, those are really monitoring the headspace above that, and that can tend to accumulate in there. And so we're looking at possibly doing some water sampling, actually within the waste stream, within the collection system, to see what effect it's having there at all. That's still in the discussion and development stage, but we'd like to make sure that as we take action to remedy this situation, that everybody's kind of got some agreement on, here's how we're monitoring the progress that's being made. Is it just a function of it's moving somewhere else? Is it a function that the system's being ventilated more, so it's just more diluted in the headspace? Or are we actually making progress in removing those conditions and those contributors to the hydrogen sulfide generation?
These are short-term fixes.
Right. These are short-term fixes immediately. We've got the consultant preparing the response to the compliance order that's due back 30 days after it was delivered on the 18th of February. So we'll have that in there. And just so that, I know I've talked with Peggy about this, but the expectation from our point on this is obviously, within 30 days, you're not going to be able to identify, here is what the long-term solution is. And so that plan that we will submit, we have described somewhat of a plan of a plan, or if you will, a plan of attack, and here is the process or the steps that we will go through in order to find solutions. And as we go through that process, we plan on communicating those options and involving the city in somewhat in that decision process, so that we make sure that they're in accordance with that as well. As we had our discussions Monday, Peggy was very good, as we looked at these different options, some of the questions that were being asked by us and the consultants is, what impact if we add these chemicals to the collection system? What impact, if any, are they going to have on the collection system further downstream or on the treatment system as well? Because like I say, we don't want to move the problem, and we don't want to create another problem in trying to solve one.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Appreciate it. It was very informative. I'm sure that a few of the council members will have some questions for you, so I'm looking around at that. Councilman Buss.
Never was a chemist, so if I butcher some of these things, then just forgive me. So it was hydrogen oxide that you?
Hydrogen peroxide.
Peroxide that you'll have on site soon?
That's most likely the one we're going with. There are other oxygenators as well, or oxidizers as well, but that's the one that we're giving preference to right now. And so it'll be availability, cost may be a factor. When you get a strong oxidizer, you also have to take a look at impact to employees and handling as well, and being able to have the compatible materials, pumping, tubing, and things like that as well, so.
So you have agreed that that will not push the problem down the line?
Correct.
So the concern on my part is, we have a daycare that is in the old, it's just south of you, what is it? Verifications building. It's a...
Right by Manhole Four.
Four. So I guess whatever we do, we need to be concerned about that facility and those kids, I guess. So part of the plan needs to be monitoring that area. I appreciate you coming and communicating these things. I found out more information than we had on Monday night, and I agree with you, good communication solves a lot of issues. And so who do we contact from your facility to have that?
Peggy has been maintaining point contact with myself and Lance Stober.
Okay.
Who's here this evening and who's our plant manager, so she's been...
So we got that resolved? We know who to talk to?
Yeah. That's our point contacts, and then we try and involve everybody else as we can. And that's something as well, and that's from a communication standpoint. I was up here Monday morning, drove up to Omaha at 2:00 Monday morning, because I couldn't leave on Sunday because of some other commitments I had. And then Monday night after I got home, got a text from Lynn about this meeting on Wednesday. And, you know, had I known that there was going to be even a meeting on Monday, where you're going to go into executive session and talk about this, I'd have gladly hung around to answer at least some of the initial questions there as well. So just knowing what the city's doing.
Okay.
As a council, as a public works department, is really very helpful. And I don't know how you communicate within the city and how you can collect that and make sure that we're looped in on that, but it would, I think it would help the process if we could.
So when do you believe that this issue, short-term, will start seeing levels reducing?
We think you've seen levels reduced already with the claiming that's going on in the system. And so that's short-term. I don't know how long it takes for the biomass to redevelop. I'm not sure how long it was, Robin, before you started getting complaints once AGP started discharging.
It was probably, well, we started getting calls...
Probably about a month later.
Yeah. See, because you didn't have this buildup of microbes and stuff within the system, because there wasn't the food coming to them. And so just like in the treatment plant, it takes a while to build up the biomass there that is used in the aeration system to treat that. And so you had a number of weeks, and so we think this gives some, at least, reduction in levels, so that we can get some chemicals in there. And that's why we're saying, even with the hydrogen peroxide, as opposed to the other avenues, the sodium nitrate for treatment, it's still going to be some adjustment. And that's why we want to make sure that we've got some monitoring in place, so that we can make adjustments. It's mostly science, but when it comes to wastewater, it's also a little bit of an art, an adjustment to that as well. Addressing the concern there with the daycare center, and then also there with other people there, I heard from the complaint that they were concerned that the odors were coming back up through the sewer into their building. And so I don't know if the city has taken a look at how those are plumbed into the system, but it is a gas, and it shouldn't come back up through a flooded P-trap. And so that would be something that if you do get complaints, I think should be looked at, to make sure that they're properly plumbed into the system, so that there aren't avenues provided for a gas to come back up, that they're properly trapped.
Before we move on, Peggy did indicate to me that you went out and spoke to them...
Right. I was out there yesterday morning.
And they stated?
There were no problems.
No problems?
At the time, but I encouraged them to make sure that all floor drains, sink traps, everything were full. And the lady that I talked to out there was very receptive to it.
Good.
She also showed me that they have never had odors inside where the daycare center's at. It's always outside, and then as they walk in, the odor follows.
Yeah. So that may be where the odors are coming from, even though it's perceived that they're inside the building, it's coming in and not actually up through the plumbing, so.
Thank you for being proactive with that, Peggy. Councilman Ronean has a question.
Thank you, ma'am. Is it Mr. Jorgensen? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And I appreciate you as well, being here today, and I feel better just hearing your explanation. But I want to back way up. I take it AGP is not questioning that it is the cause of these levels? Is that right?
The cause? Definitely, where they didn't exist before, and the discharge here, I mean, there's things that contribute to that situation. At other facilities, for example, that we discharge too, we may have similar conditions, although not as high as BODs. But depending on what type of a collection system you discharge into, here this one's flat with multiple lift stations, and so the collection system itself also lends to the development of hydrogen sulfide. That's not placing blame on the city for having the collection system. They do, but it's just another component. So, but we are the contributor that has caused it.
That's what I just wanted to make sure, is that you're acknowledging that that is the case.
Yes.
I'm also curious, then, what is going to be the target? And I take it would be in parts per million for both the short-term solution and what you refer to as the long-term solution? What do you, what's our target?
I don't know at this point. I can't tell you that, and that's why we want to talk about what is the appropriate place to monitor at and where it is. Because, for example, if we monitor things at AGP's discharge point, that's not necessarily going to tell you what's happening in the collection system. And so it's going to be probably a combination of things, both from an air monitoring, as well as from monitoring the wastewater at different points, both from where it leaves AGP and potentially also in the collection system, until we get a handle on it. Once we do get a handle on it, we may be able to back off on monitoring as many things, because you end up basically, if you say, okay, if these are the conditions at this point, and you monitor conditions at other points as well, if you say, okay, if this is a controlling parameters, and if we keep these, within these parameters, we can assume that there aren't problems in other areas as well that you might be monitoring. So we're really looking at multiple monittrings and seeing, and as far as setting a point and a parameter that you monitor, whether that's hydrogen sulfide gas, whether that's total sulfides, whether that's dosing rates for the chemicals that we're using, we'll have to wait and see. But like we said, that's why we want to have some discussion with Peggy and with Robin about what is it we should be monitoring, and I think we'll rise at some solution of, okay, here's going to be some target ranges that we want.
Does AGP monitor hydrogen sulfide rates at other plants?
Currently, we do not. There was one facility that we had an issue with, because we had an anaerobic digester, but that was also a place where we had an ethanol facility, and we took that out of production. That situation went away. We had another situation where we actually discharged through a force main to the city. And so when you're taking that, you no longer have that retention time, you're already taking it from here. There isn't the headspace, and there isn't the time associated for that to generate. And then other facilities, we haven't seen a hydrogen sulfide. Of course, a lot of it is, depending on how many other sources are discharging into it, at the same point you are. And so there's, you can't directly compare it against other facilities, but now, we don't have any other facilities where hydrogen sulfide is actively a problem, or we're having to treat it.
Or being monitored.
Or being monitored, correct.
Mr. Bob Zinn, did you have a question?
Well, I was just going to point out that actually, when Midstates called, their first reaction was, obviously, if we're getting gases in the building, we better check all the traps. And that was their first reaction.
Good. So they did that then?
They did that, absolutely. That was their first thought.
So, Kelly, it seems as though, from some of the different things that you had said, you kind of see a correlation between the BOD levels and the hydrogen sulfide production?
The high BOD levels are what create the condition for the sulfates to be able to convert to sulfides and hydrogen sulfide, because it very rapidly creates an anoxic or septic anaerobic condition in which the formation takes place.
So it kind of goes to reason that as you solve the problem that was in front of you, some of this other problem will kind of dissipate?
Right. I mean, you've got BOD, you've got temperature, pH adjustment is one that we've talked about and are looking at as well. The higher your pH is in your wastewater, the less available the sulfites are for conversion into hydrogen sulfide. So that's something that we're looking at as well. We haven't concluded that. That may end up being a portion of it with the use of oxidation or a scavenger as well to help control that. But we have to take a look at the system all the way down the line, because we don't, like we've said, we don't want to move the situation further down line. And Bob provided us some diagrams of the system and some flows, so that our consultants can take a look at that. And so we're trying to work in concert with the city to make sure that, okay, if we treat it here, but what happens further down? Are we providing enough of the right conditions or treatment here, so that we don't just move the problem further down the system?
So the solution that needs to be in place by year-end, 12/31, it sounded as though we were talking in terms of a pre-treatment system, but that's not necessarily a facility, a system, that could be a chemical application or something else?
The pre-treatment system, as it is envisioned in the compliance order, is more to treat the BOD, as opposed to directly address the hydrogen sulfide. Now, if in our investigation and our long-term solution of type of pre-treatment and reducing the BODs, obviously, to the extent that you remove BOD from it, there's less potential for those anaerobic or septic conditions to exist. However, they still may. As I mentioned, we're also taking a look at sulfates and sulfur compounds, both from our chemical treatment system, the RO system, and, I mean, anything that's in the source water right now, our RO should be taking most of that out. But right now, that RO reject is coming back into the system, so it's actually being reintroduced. So as we take a long look at this, there's a lot of contributors, and so we're looking at a multiple-pronged story problem here, and trying to find the best overall solution. story problem here, and trying to find the best overall solution.
And so the 275 proposed peak levels that you were seeing from the other plants, that comes without like a pre-treatment system?
Correct.
And so it might be the water itself. It might be the beans themselves. It might be equipment usage, those other type of things. But you're working through it. I'm, I'm really glad that you guys were able to come. You shined a lot of light on things. I'm going to assume that maybe some other council members have questions. And when they do, one's...
Couple of quick questions. First of all, thanks for coming. It definitely eases my mind to a certain extent, that you guys are, are addressing this the way we had hoped for. But a couple of things is, when you use these oxidizers, do they create any other byproducts down the line that we need to be concerned with, or fire departments, emergency management people need to be worried about?
As far as in the, the treatment system, no. Hydrogen peroxide is essentially hydrogen and oxygen. And when it decomposes, it decomposes into, to water and oxygen. And so it's that extra oxygen that's in there that's, that's used as an oxidizer. From a fire department standpoint, from, and this is because we do all, I do all environmental compliance from an S, from a, from a tier-two or emergency response, where we share with the fire department what chemicals we have on site. We'll certainly update that, so that they understand if we're using hydrogen peroxide. We have hydrogen peroxide here on site. And in the case of a fire or something like that, that's something that they'd definitely want to be aware of. But as far as impact to the wastewater stream, no.
Okay. And then currently, until we get this under somewhat of a control, obviously, we've been notified that this is, this is explosive. And the, currently at its rate, if it's at a, at the right conditions, this could blow up, correct? This, the sulfide, hydrogen sulfide?
Hydrogen sulfide does have explosive levels. I couldn't speak to that. I'm, I'm not as familiar with that, or where those levels are. It's actually got a, a range. And you've got to have the right conditions, and you've got to have a, of a source of ignition as well. So, under exactly what conditions that that could potentially happen, I, I'm not prepared to address that.
So, just so that I understand, and, and also our partners out there understand that, that with what you're saying, the explosive nature probably is less, less of a problem than the actual gas itself for, for the human being coming in contact, or going into the hole, or being subjected to it at a higher level. Is that correct? Or am I asking the question incorrectly?
I would say that's correct.
Okay.
And, and with it being in a manhole or, or something, I know the city works department, and Peggy and her group, just as, as we are there, you've got confined space entry procedures where, where you monitor the gas that's in a confined space there, and you ventilate it, and monitor it, and make sure it's in safe levels before you have people enter into a level like that. And so, from an employee's standpoint, I've, I've got confidence in your public works department, and Peggy and her department, that they know what they're dealing with. I mean, they're professionals. And so, I don't see that as, I mean, you have to be aware that the potential exists, but with proper procedures, you, you mitigate or, or remove that risk.
Right. And, and that's just what I'm trying to get at, is that hopefully, if I'm hearing everything correct, our explosive, the explosion is less likely than the gas itself harming somebody, meaning that we don't, hopefully, somebody driving down the road there is not going to get blown up, or the street doesn't get blown up. That's probably a more of a concern for somebody, oh, my gosh, is it's going to blow up, is probably, you, you see what I'm getting at? I don't want to make people more concerned than they need to on an explosive nature.
Right. I'd defer to Peggy and Rob, where, where they've monitored that. And Peggy's more familiar exactly where, what levels have, have been measured and with what frequency.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Oh, Councilman Rox.
I apologize for making you travel a couple of times in a week, but thank, thanks for being here.
No problem. It's a beautiful drive.
And it's not flooded, so hopefully it was a little quicker.
I don't know if we can trust this guy.
Well, you have to remember, I, I drove it at two o'clock in the morning, so it's black, so.
So, right now, you're looking at a timeframe of, by the end of this week, to have something in place. Is that correct?
Currently, yes. That's what our consultants telling us with the, with the current availability and the chemical suppliers that they're working with.
Okay. So, so, because I do see, when I was driving in that area, that we have like a 55-gallon drum with a fan on top?
We've got three of those on the system.
Got three of those on the system. And, and of course, as I drove by, I did notice that there was an odor to it. So we're, I'm guessing we're ventilating that out of the system? Okay. So that's, your goal is to have that done by the end of the week?
Correct.
And then you'll start your monitoring after that, I'm guessing, to see if those levels have dropped?
Yeah. Like I say, this is all happening very fast, and I haven't had a chance to, to discuss with, with Peggy or Rob what, what the appropriate places or things to monitor is. But I, I do know that Peggy's planning on putting in the Accrologger again, once we start treatment, because we've got those baselines from those two manholes. And certainly putting those back in will give a, a good indication of how effective that is. But I'm not sure how long those loggers have to be in, and whether they've got data acquisition on them, where you can view that information real time or not. And so, you know, rather than having to wait, if we do have to wait, and I'm not sure Peggy could address that, if we do or not, if we have to wait for a week or week and a half, and then print out all of that data, or if we can monitor it more real time with the Accrologger, or if we need to be taking a look at some other parameters or places where we're monitoring it.
And then that was the other question I was going to have, is in your, in your comments, you sat there and said that you would probably want to look at more permanent tracking of not only just your BODs, but your, the hydrogen sulfide. You know, I'm guessing, correct?
Correct. Either the hydrogen sulfide, or monitoring those conditions that, that lend towards hydrogen sulfide generation.
Okay.
Because if you can set up some parameters and say, hey, here are our hydrogen levels, hydrogen sulfide levels are here, because the parameters are at these levels, then is it necessary to monitor the hydrogen sulfide, or do you just monitor the controlling parameters?
So, Councilman Bunce.
So I think this has been good, in communication. I have an expectation of how often you should be in front of us, explaining the progress that we are, we're going to see. What, what is your expectation?
My expectation is that we would be here as often as necessary to, to make the city feel comfortable. So if, if you've got a frequency, or your other, other council members do, we're here to make that happen, so.
Okay.
Once again, I want to thank you guys for traveling up here. I know that it's massive inconvenience to hit that many miles on the road. And I think that you've done a great job of kind of calming everybody's concerns over the safety, which was, you know, kind of the top priority for most of the people in this room.
Well, actually, I was going to go similar to you in your direction there, and I was going to ask Kelly, if you'd be kind enough, because of where we are on the beginning part of the stage, if he would just file me a quick, you know, outline at the end of the week as to what his actions were. And so I could provide that to the council, and so we could see what we're doing in the next couple of weeks, if that would be okay with you. Or you just do a quick summary and send it to me, and then I'll give it to the council?
I guess I'd rather have, and it doesn't, I'm not saying you have to be here weekly, but I would like to see your face again. Maybe every two weeks, or something in that order, but with the summary in between, just to see what progress is happening. I think this is good when you're in front of us. I can read, I can read it, but, you know, it's...
Yeah, it's hard to ask a piece of paper question.
Right.
I, I would also like, maybe, once you get the system in, and you're starting to, now, I know you'll let Peggy know, but to send an email to the council, or to Lynn, and he'll divert, send it out. That, that way, you, we know that you got basically the equipment in.
Okay.
And the chemical.
Okay. So, so what I'm hearing, just to make sure that your expectations match what I, I think I've heard, is that communications to the city council would be directly to Lynn, and then he would disseminate that to the council. And then, and we can kind of, kind of work through that, as far as then weekly or bi-weekly here with, with the council meeting. We've got Lance Stober, who's, who's here in town all of the time. And so he can certainly be here. And then I know, because we watched the Monday night one on, on YouTube, just because we thought, well, maybe, you know, what happened Monday night that precipitated the, the need for this, this meeting Wednesday. So, so we know that there's a call-in option as well. And so, I'd be happy to do that if I'm not able to be here in, in person each time as well, so.
And everything was an executive session on Monday, right?
Yeah.
So you watched all that YouTube?
So we watched that for...
Councilman Olson.
Well, this is very enlightening for many of us, I think, on the council. I, I think what I'm most encouraged about is the relationship that Peggy has with you. And, and we always rely on our department heads a great deal. And Peggy's certainly a trusted professional in her field, and Robin as well. But I, I'm just happy that you have developed that relationship, and I hope it continues, because Peggy reports to us quite frequently, her concerns. And so I, I'm encouraged by this meeting, that you folks came and visited with us. It's very enlightening. Thank you.
Okay. And then I'd just offer, because I know sometimes even with, with a, with your meetings on, on Monday, if, if there's something that, that we share with, with Lynn, that he shares then with the council, and you've got a question, and if I'm sharing that with, with Lynn at the, at the end of the, the week, or maybe the beginning of the week, or whatever frequency we, we do on that, and that raises a question with, with one of you, and you don't want to wait until the council meeting, Lynn's got my, my contact information, Peggy's got it, Rob has got it as well. So I'm, an email directly, or even a phone call, if necessary, from, directly from one of the council members, I'm open to that as well. So, because I know sometimes, I gotta wait until they, they show up, because sometimes those concerns or those questions are, are more immediate. So if there is something that comes up there, please don't feel like you have to wait until I send another communication to Lynn, or somebody is here before you, the, the city council as well.
I really appreciate that accessibility. And I felt like that all the way along here. I mean, the fact that you presented this information on Friday, and had already begun to address it, you know, Monday morning, it says a lot about your organization. So, appreciate you guys coming in. Is there anything else? Councilman Rone?
Thank you. You know, I would just ask that the administration report back to us on Monday as to, as to any, any progress. Hopefully, they'll have the oxidizer in, in place, that, that maybe there, there will have been some improvement by Monday, so we could put that on our agenda. We could include that information as part of the manager's report? Terrific. For Monday night? Okay.
And, and with this one, I just might mention, you know, Lynn, I'm providing you something as soon as we get that in. We may gather additional information. And so, here, you may, you may see a couple of emails from me, and certainly provide you, if there's a difference between the end of the week and, and Monday, I'll, I'll provide you additional information, so it's, it's fresh.
Peggy, before we close this thing out, do you have anything else that you'd like to present from your vantage point over there? Sounds like everything's been a pretty good working relationship.
Yeah, we've had, you know, I think it's been very successful. I've been doing this for a really long time. And I've dealt with every large industry that's came in here the last thirty years, and I've said it. But I am very pleased with, you know, the relationship that we have. And, you know, any issues that we've had has been readily addressed. So, I appreciate them being open, you know, their results. You'll call them, and they'll give some results in there, and, you know, even before the monitoring period or times.
Sure. And we have such a can-do attitude around here in Aberdeen. I'm sure that's maybe why we thought we'd solve some of those problems before we reported back to you. But yeah, I think that in the future, I think we, we can commit to be a little bit more direct with the complaints and that sort of a thing, as, as they're developing. But obviously, you're under a little bit more of a spotlight now than it was at that point. So, thank you, gentlemen, for coming in. If nobody else has anything else, I'd like to take a motion to, to close this thing out.
Move to adjourn.
Say again.
Motion, Bunce, and a second motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.